Please have a pledge of allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we have a roll call, please.
Mr. Good, Mr. Seaver.
Here.
Ms. Stombach.
Here.
Mr. Sowers.
Here.
Mr. Huffman.
Here.
Ms. Dixon.
Here.
Here. So does anyone have any additions or changes to the meeting minutes, to the agenda?
I move we move forward with the agenda as presented.
Okay, we'll move forward with the agenda as presented. So a review of the minutes of the April 10th, 2024 meeting. Anyone have any changes or alterations to that? Hearing none, do we have a motion to accept the minutes?
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes as presented.
First, a second.
I'll second.
Second, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Were there any general comments? I didn't check when I came in.
No comments.
So we'll jump right into the public hearings. No one signed up for any of those?
No. Email, phone calls, no comments, no. Don't give you the ballot.
We get to the right spot here. See who's coming in here. So the planning commission is requested to conduct a public hearing to receive citizen input and to consider request for a special use permit to operate a lodging house at 135 Baker Drive, tax map 42A 17-1203, in the planned neighborhood development zoning district. I will read this next part one time since we have all of these, I think we have five this evening. A lodging house is commonly defined as a residential building other than a hotel, motel, or bed and breakfast home, where lodging is provided for compensation on a regular basis pursuant to previous arrangements but which is not open to the public or transient guests for no longer than 30 consecutive days. Meals may be provided to the residents in a central location, however, no provision shall be made for cooking in individual rooms or units. The maximum number of guests shall be two per bedroom with onsite parking for all guests at a rate of one off-street parking space per bedroom. Staff recommends the following conditions be considered: compliance with Town Code 519 Lodging House Regulations; guests' stay shall not exceed 14 days; special use permit shall not transfer upon sale of property or membership interest composition of the holding company; two off-street parking spaces provided on the property, and one off-street space in the neighborhood parking lot down the street. So we have the permit that has been presented to us. We have a letter from, this is concerning a paving Aluri. A letter from Mr. Aluri. We have information on the property itself, the exterior, a map of the location of the property, interior floor design. There was a question about the parking that Brian answered.
Some of these, Mr. Chairman, are going to have, I don't, the special provision number four is going to be a restriction. I think the next two and possibly the fourth one, they're going to restrict their guests to only two bills by a statement in their reservation policy. So they won't need that extra third off-street space.
So has anyone signed up? Yes, ma'am.
I look for information. I want to see if I have anything.
So if you'd like to come to the podium and state your name and your address, it'd be fine, thank you.
My name is Beth Ann, so I live at 210 Virginia Avenue, Lorraine. I really didn't do a lot of preparation. I just saw the notices a few weeks ago in the newspaper, and I do feel strongly about them. I've been a resident of Page County, either Lorraine or Stanley, my entire life, and I did a quick search of just recent articles that had been put out about Lorraine Landing, and the one I came across was dated July 27, 2022, and in that it was touting the Lorraine Landing was coming, and one of the statements that was made was regarding it is, after spending lots of years waiting for the planning process to proceed, we are excited about this planned community. And to me, the definition of community is people who live here and residing here and part of our community. Furthermore, Gina, who I know doesn't represent the town per se, but she represents the county, she says, "We appreciate you investing in Page County and providing homes for people to move here, relocate here, and live here." And that's the way I would like for these houses to be used, for people who are going to live here. And I can't speak for my employer, but I work with young families in Page County, and many of them are mechanically disadvantaged, and housing has become a real concern for a lot of those families. Many of them are moving towards several generations living in one home because they can't afford rent, and that's a big deal for the people in our county. And I'm starting to see homeless people emerge within our county, and I think that that problem's going to continue to get worse. And I think this is one way that we can combat that, is to stop some of the special use permits that are going through. I know others have already been given the okay, and they can't be revoked, but I think going forward, we need to really consider strongly authorizing those special use permits. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
So any other thoughts about this, or?
You know, I don't disagree with your comments, but there's, we've approved all these that have come before us, and I feel like we're going to approve all these that come before us because there's no out for us. The homeowners association allows this, and without any other, you know, conditions, I don't think that that's something we can disallow, unfortunately.
And the majority are still primary residences, right now?
For the towns?
For the, mm-hmm.
Yeah, for the towns, so far.
And some of them have went to long-term rentals. There were short-term rentals.
And we've got a couple that have already changed names.
They've resold because?
Sold and resold. We need to make sure we open and close the public hearing.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Open the public hearing, and if no other speakers, we'll close the public hearing. I understand the problem with housing in the community, but I don't know that that's the solution. It's really inflationary, I believe, and the cost of homes and everything else that, I'm not sure those units out there are, you know, the type of home that people are looking for that are...
It's not cheap.
Well, I agree with that, but I would also say that I have a concern with, you know, private investors coming in and buying up housing stock, of which we don't have enough of to start with. And those units in particular might not be the type of units that the folks that you work with are seeking. But anytime housing stock is reduced, prices will go up. It's supply and demand. So I just, I have a very strong concern about this, and I am really uncomfortable with approving any more until we, as a body, decide what our recommendation is going to be, if any, to the council.
Well, I think we have...
I mean, when they come five at a time.
No, I agree with you. It's a lot at once, but there's, we haven't decided, and we have to deal with what we've got on the table right now.
How many of these have been approved so far out there? Is it about five in this development?
No, it's like 12.
Yeah, between Allison Drive, College Drive.
But 12 out of 200, how many? That's not, that's 10%?
We haven't seen any occasionally. Catdool Drive is just starting to get built. Ray Court hasn't been available to purchase yet, so there will be, you know, we're probably running 1% to 2% of the total number of housing units out there right now in terms of under an active special use permit. However, I've got another one on Baker in mind that you guys will see next.
And they don't always come at five at a time.
No.
But they've come a lot in the last two years, certainly.
This is unusual. I was not prepared for this one either, but...
Well, this is a special circumstance with one agent doing it for people that are...
Yeah, two of each five are for a special purpose for other individuals that travel, but you could maybe make that argument about, oh, we've been special for people who travel, just a different item, special. But, yeah, there's, it's unusual to get that many. I was looking through the special use permits that we've issued as a commission over the last 10 years. The numbers were tiny, you know, we rarely issue special use permits. And then about seven years ago, we started issuing a lot of special use permits. Folks started to apply for things, not just short-term rentals, certain lodging houses, but like all kinds of different things that require special use permits all over the region. So our number started to increase, seemingly, about seven years ago.
Well, the number that stood out for me was the number of housing units in the town, around 21 or 2200, and there are like 80 that are listed, many of them probably illegal. I mean, on the platforms where we receive the tax money, it was like 36 or 38. So it seems like a lot, but in some ways, it's not a lot.
Well, it does garner a lot of attention because it is an unusual use in a residential neighborhood or in a business district where it's not your normal business, you know, to have like a lodging house type scenario even in business districts. So I think it garners additional attention because of that.
Yeah, well, and the fact that it's all been in the last two years or so as opposed to, you know, more than what we've done over the last 10 years, and it does, it gets people's attention a little bit.
Well, there's articles in the paper about it all the time, hearing on the news all the time, so it's really out in everybody's front of their mind, and, you know, when it comes down to it, and you actually add up the numbers that are still actually active, a lot of the ones that we looked at just this past week on VRBO, you call the numbers and they tell you, or go to the email and they're like, we're temporarily not taking reservations, either because they've decided to change venues, or they're booked up or something. But, so not all of them that are on the platforms are actively recruiting reservations.
Right, but all of them that are on the platform are unavailable for local residents to either purchase or rent.
Correct.
And that is an issue, and I understand that we are somewhat limited in what we can do to ease that crisis, but I would be happy if we could just do things that don't make it any worse. And I just, I mean, I understand what you say, and I agree, I agree with you. We've approved them all, and, you know, the developer has put it in their covenants that short-term rentals are allowed in those units, but it's still a special use process, and this body still has a vote to say yes or no, we are going to recommend approval or denial to the council. It is a special use process. We don't have to say yes. We don't have to recommend it to the council. I mean, I, for one, think we ought to pump the brakes until we really research our housing stock, try to figure out what the impacts are of short-term rentals in our community. Some of those impacts are the same in other communities, some are probably not the same as in other communities, but to have five or six every meeting, or every other meeting, or whatever, I mean, since I've been on in a year, it's been a lot.
But it's still only been 12 over the last, what did he use?
But that's 12 families, Tracy, that might have been able to rent a place.
But look at this percentage of it.
And everyone, right, but look at the percent of increase.
But the amount of rent that they would charge for a long-term rental on those, it might not be within that price.
Every private investor that buys up housing stock not only takes it out of the rental market, but it also increases prices for the units that are available. It has an impact. That's why it's in the news.
But these places could be remain, still be remain out there unsold if somebody didn't, because were these same five people looking to purchase this?
Right, and then prices might come down. Wouldn't that be nice?
Is it a function of the planning commission to control prices in the free market?
It is the function of a planning commission to decide what land use should be according to a comprehensive plan.
Yes, I agree.
For our residents, and housing...
But we've got to look at the law too, and the code, and what is allowed at this point, and this is what is allowed.
Well, we're allowed to not recommend it for approval.
We are allowed to not recommend, but it's hard-pressed to not recommend something.
And we are allowed to recommend policies that direct and guide development in accordance with our community's goals and their desires of what they want Lorraine to be.
And what Brian has shared with us, though, is that it's already starting to self-correct it somewhat by some of them being sold again, going into long-term.
Right, so if two get sold and go to long-term, and then we get five. And then two more go into long-term, and then we get three. And then two more go into long-term, and then we get seven.
So the plate, but, so a lot of these people are going to have to resell, or they're going to have to put it in long-term rentals, because at what point is it, does it need to be 30% rented in order for them to be able to afford to do short-term rentals? Does it need to be 80% rented? I know each person's different because they're in a different financial situation, but again, the process of supply and demand, again, if supply goes up quite a bit, then the demand's going to be going down. I mean, I mean, not demand's going down, but...
And then prices come down.
Right, so, I mean, that's...
We're not in the business to help everybody's balance sheets and their income statements. We're not in the business to help that developer make money. That's not our role. We need to look out for our people, our residents, the people that live here. And I don't know that me voting no tonight on these five will make a drop in the bucket, but I'm going to sleep better tonight because I think we need to pump the brakes. I don't think we have, I don't think we have really studied it enough to know what the impacts are or not, and I am not willing to keep just approving, 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 until we know what we want to do and what we want to recommend. That's my conscience. I'm one vote, and I don't disagree with any of you. I'm just saying, I think we should pump the brakes. Because if we, if we don't, and we just say, well, it's allowed, it's allowed, it's allowed, we've approved all the others, let's just keep approving, then at what point is it too late to do anything?
What do you say to the people you've already approved to, and how do you justify it to the people that you're not going to approve?
Because when we first asked the question of the prior town manager, he said the council would decide to change policy when they felt the market was saturated, and I think...
How about when the market gets saturated, the market decides?
Well, the market is why we have people who have to leave this community because they cannot afford to live here and work here.
I agree, but I don't think denying people in favor of development is going to do that.
In all the industries that support the tourists that we say we want, and I serve that industry in my business, but we are, we're getting close to having a real problem. And do we want to be a place where we have to truck in workers from other places to come in here and work because our own people can't afford to be a server in one of our restaurants? They don't make enough money to pay rent to live here? I mean, is that, because that's happened in other places.
It's going to happen, yeah.
I just, I just...
But those people we truck in will have to have someplace to live, right?
Well, this discussion will probably, you know, apply to all five of these that we need to decide tonight, so...
Yep.
Do you want to do, can we do a blanket approval or denial?
He has to open five public hearings.
I really sort of agree with Brian's comments, you know, the market's going to settle this. As those houses stand out there now, a lot of people can't afford to buy them or rent them, and if, at some point, the people that purchase these have to make the payments, and the rent may very well go down drastically, then the market will take care of that. So do anyone want to move forward with a motion?
Yes, I'll move that we approve the special use permit 24003 to recommend to the council for approval with the conditions as noted.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Well, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. Well, we need a roll call for that, that's right.
Mr. Seaver.
Yes.
Ms. Stombach.
No.
Mr. Sowers.
Yes.
Mr. Huffman.
Yes.
Ms. Dixon.
Yes.
Yes. So we will move along to Mr. Passuletti. Again, the same statement that I read earlier applies, and they seem to have all the information provided here with a request for a special use permit, a letter, and information on the home itself, the exterior information, interior plan, location map.
Mr. Chairman, these, this one here, 004 and 005, the same agent, this operator on Lodge Go, he is working to establish short-term rental developments for hearing impaired individuals like himself across the country, and he's part of that team in that kind of business that kind of do that, to make arrangements for other folks that are hearing impaired. So he is the agent on 004 and 005. They're on the side of the...
Yes.
Are they side by side?
Yeah, 250 and 254 are side by side.
I suppose I should enter into the record the location... I suppose I should enter into the record the location of these in the.
I'll just the addresses and I'll have it all in the record.
So this is a request for a special use permit for 250 Baker Drive. And if we can enter these together. It's on the right page here. 254 Baker Drive. And each, um, request has the proper, um, information provided that we had reviewed earlier. Is there any other discussion on, uh, these two?
So on these two units, are there any, like, designs differently? Is this, this is, these are built the same, but this is particularly catering toward the hearing impaired community? Is there, I guess if there's something's done differently, it's, doesn't need to come to us anyway, like, as far as interior, exterior, or whatever, it's just a building?
There'll be several, probably, uh, devices installed each locality. There will be, um, a variety of information, uh, you know, comments, uh, several videos and comments, things like that, from what I understand.
Just curious.
No other changes.
Okay.
It was interesting, it says, a, I guess, a minute noise monitoring device approved by, as is typical, will be installed in the house, it detects noise levels, and alerts guests and hosts if they exceed the designated.
Decibel.
A decibel, thank you. Additionally, it can identify smoking or weed use in the house. The device also counts the number of guests by checking mobile devices to prevent large unauthorized parties. Is that, is that pretty standard?
No, that's a technology that I have not.
That's new technology, yeah.
That's neat, that's cool.
Interesting.
Probably fairly expensive, I would. Probably not going to see these on probably any of our other units, I expect.
If each reservation mandates a $500 security deposit to deter undesirable guests.
Yes. And he is one of the, uh, both of these are going to restrict the number, maximum number of vehicles to two.
Two.
So that both of the cars fit on the, in the onsite driveway in the garage. And he issued a statement to that effect for both of these applications.
Any other discussion? Is there a motion on the floor? I need to open.
And close.
And close. Thank you.
You get the hang of this by the time we're.
We need a motion for 250, we need two separate.
Okay.
We can come by everything else, we'll need two separate.
So the first one, we have a motion for 250 Baker Drive.
I'll make a motion for 250 Baker Drive, move that the special use permit 2405 be recommended to council for approval, with conditions presented.
Five or four.
I'm sorry, 04, 24-004 be recommended to council for approval.
And we have a second? So all those in favor, please say aye. No, we get a roll call, I'm sorry.
I'm telling you, by number five, you go.
This is, I'm, I'm a substitute here today.
You're doing great.
You're doing great.
Uh, Mr. Seaver.
Yes.
Ms. Stonebuck.
No.
Mr. Sowers.
Yes.
Mr. Huffman.
Yes.
Ms. Dixon.
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer.
Yes.
Okay, now I can take a moment on 254.
So the next one on the list, again, is 254 Baker Drive. So we need a motion. Do we have a motion?
Yes, I'll, I'll move that the special use permit.
Open and close.
Not the special.
You have to open, close debate.
Oh, we have to open and close the, I thought we did the both of them together. We did. Right, now we're closing, we're closing.
Sorry.
I move the special use permit, uh, 24005 be recommended to the council for approval, with the conditions as presented.
So we have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Tracy. Any further discussion? Have the roll call.
Mr. Seaver.
Yes.
Ms. Stonebuck.
No.
Mr. Sowers.
Yes.
Mr. Huffman. Yes.
Ms. Dixon. Yes.
So now we go through one more. This is a special use permit for 230 Baker Drive, and I'll open the public hearing. Yes, ma'am.
Maybe it's not, um, for the type of people who I come into contact with daily in my work, but I do have children that I would like to be able to stay here and be able to afford a house here. Uh, currently, the going rate is between 250 and 300,000 for those houses, and, uh, just a quick Google search says that my kids would need to be able to earn between 90 and 100,000 a year. My daughter's currently in school to be a teacher, a first-year teacher in Page County, currently makes $48,000. So her and her husband won't, unless he has a much better job out of the county, they won't be able to afford a house here.
That's right.
So if you guys, as a county, as a town, we don't start to do something to, um, I don't want you to cater, but, and we, we need to do something to put the brakes on. And committees and the towns are the only ones who have the brakes. Waiting for the market to correct itself isn't an option. Um, we're not Northern Virginia, we're not DC. So we, we are a rural community, and I think a lot of us that live here would like for our children to be able to stay here and grow their families here. And if we don't put the brakes on, find a way to do it, and you say we have no control, you guys are the ones who do have control. I don't have any control over it, you do. So I, I see the stamping, you know, let's go with it. But I like Ms. Stonebuck's idea of, you know, look into it, what can you guys do? Just because their ordinance say that they can be allowed, it's special use, so that that's where the county's right to say no comes in. So I would encourage you to consider saying no. Um, anyway, so, I'll say my two cents, thank you.
No, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
You know, we're about to enter a phase of redoing a comprehensive plan, and housing is going to be a major discussion in that, not necessarily of housing that's located out there, but what can we do in other areas bordering town, and what can we do within the community to increase housing, not necessarily in these higher-income homes. So it is a discussion point, and something that's going to take, uh, center stage as we move into the next comprehensive plan, but.
Consider a three-bedroom, two-bath, a higher-income home?
Well, just at those prices, I mean, that's a price. What, but if you can afford it, you can afford it. I mean, how can we affect that price? That, 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 Baker.
Not allowing private investors to come into our properties and.
But, but how can, but even in housing markets, even if a private person put their house up, they, you, you really can't dictate what a private person or who they're going to sell it to. They might sell it to someone local, they may not.
Right.
So there's, there's a choice.
Anything available for short-term rentals?
But we're not making everything available for short-term rentals.
20% of these houses. So would you market them as such? And that wasn't what Lurie Landy was told, it'd be, it'd be a housing development, not a, I'm not a bad person, but.
Understood.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No, thank you for your comments. So we are waiting for a motion, I suppose. No, I need to close the public hearing. And see if we have any other discussion here among.
Mr. Chairman, I have a few comments on this one. This one also is restricting their vehicles to two per reservation rental. This particular individual, um, operates another short-term rental, uh, in on Baker Drive, he and his wife. And I guess they started to divest.
She, she was here, I think, wasn't she?
Yes. Mm-hmm, correct. And there's a, I don't know, funny little story about the last one, but anyway, he's , uh, 230 Baker Drive, and, uh, um, other than that, his application is very similar to the others. There are always, they have to lay out, still see number of vehicles. He is a fairly effective business player that he uses now. And he's usually here the first month of, I guess, special use, he comes in, firstly from Maryland, basically, because he says his wife picks him.
Good for her. So is there any way to determine, I mean, can you guys determine from the income you're getting, revenue you're getting coming in for taxes, like, what the percentage? I know people can list a property for 100 bucks or 500 bucks a night, so you can't determine that, so is there any way, there's no way determining, like, are these, the places they have currently, are they being rented on average, like, three nights a month or 23 nights a month?
You'd have to track that individual, uh, statistics, all week as a total.
That's what I thought.
And the state law was going to pass, which didn't pass until I won, to where we'd be get access to information about who did what. That did not make it.
So the best way to get an educated guess, if you looked online to see.
Yeah.
What the, what they were renting for, if you just, I decided I wanted to try to rent it, try to get a figure. See, it's 200 bucks, trying to do the math, and you could determine from what the town takes in revenue that is.
Well, it's a little fairly tricky too, because most of the vendors do not want you to know how successful or unsuccessful they are with the rental reservations.
Right.
So that's really tough to see there. You almost have to put in a bunch of dates in a row and see what the reservation rate is.
Correct.
Are they all available?
Right.
You know, for six months straight?
And if for seven nights, is it different than three days? Is Tuesday different than Saturday?
Correct. So it's really, it's a really kind of a tough data set to track down, because there are a lot of variables there, and, um, you know, you can pay a lot or a little, a little, just depends on which kind of place you want and where you want to go. So it, it really, um, we were hoping for the general assembly to provide some additional support, and that didn't quite make it this year. So we were hopeful for that, which wasn't going to take impact until July 1, so we were going to, um, have access to some more data, but, and especially the platforms, how the platforms and the individual owners interact, in terms of how much money, change his hands and for which addresses that money, those fellows change it. Because if you end up a situation like this, we have the same person that has multiple properties, and it's tough to kind of tell.
Yeah, I know, I was.
Yeah.
I was thinking out loud.
Now, they do have their own business license. So total sales for the business license for each year, we can track that at the end of each year. But it gets for the entire previous year, and you don't know where that's spread out, you know, where there's costs. Yeah.
I think if you, um, if you look to have a property of your own on Airbnb, I'm pretty sure the platform gives you information, and they will recommend, um, rates.
Right.
And they'll give you information on, um, which days of the week are most rented in the area where your property is located, and the rental rates.
Right, and the way I look at it too, is you can go by that recommendation, but it also is sort of like, what can you sell your property for, 200,000 or 300,000? If I, if I've got a listed for 199, and nobody's biting, and the next neighbor has it, well, they, well, they're going for 159. So maybe I, you know, so I think that's, I'm not saying that corrects the market, which we've talked about several times tonight, but that's something that I think would help determine what you, even if something recommends a rate, what can you get, is basically what you're going to charge at the end of the day. To make, to break even on, you need $2,000 a month, or 800 or 4,000, whatever it is, you need to figure out what's best for you to determine how you're going to get that, right? I mean, so I think that helps determine, you know, each, it's interesting, you have eight different people, and they probably all look at it differently on how they, how they manage their own property, but.
It's a fairly successful marketing job on behalf of the developer.
Yeah.
Um, it, it just still amazes me to this day that our community has become an investment residential property community in the middle of a shadow battle. It just kind of bothers my mind that that has happened.
We ran out of cabins, I guess, maybe.
I guess, but I, I guess, like I said, very successful marketing, because I can't think of any other reason why it would have happened here, unless there was a very proactive marketing component.
Well, I don't think it's that unusual.
I think COVID helped it along a lot.
There are only 63 national parks in the United States, and only five in the eastern United States, and one's right down the street here.
Right.
And we're beside the fifth-largest city in the country.
You got the river.
And, um.
Do, outdoors.
I mean, it is a very visible topic in the community, I know, but I'm not sure how that controls the, the, the lack of housing. It's statewide, the lack of housing. And I think we need to concentrate, as the comprehensive plan indicates, of finding ways to get people to come in and develop, maybe with apartment complexes or something, in the regions that are available on the outskirts of town, and, and attack it that way. But I'm not sure it's short-term rental that's the answer.
Our cabin rentals are down probably 30% this year. When COVID, when the government was giving everybody money, they were flocking into state. I mean, we were, we were full state fund. Now, it's like this 30, 35% down on cabin rentals, so I don't know. And anything, I'm just voicing my little hint.
Thank you.
That's 6,000 goes, that, uh, that's a fine line there. I'm a builder, and that's one reason I'm here. But.
Do you want to step up and make some comments, and just, please do?
I'm a builder, and that's why I'm here.
Tell us your name and your.
Jim Vaughn. But you got to look at it and control it somewhere, because do you want to ride, do you want to ride up on the drive and look at a subdivision? Do you want to come stay in a subdivision? Do you want to, I mean, why not stay in Fairfax? What used to come to this community is, it's, this community, how do I say, it's an old folks' home and a tourist attraction. And I, hey, believe me, I'm well on my way to the old folks'.
We all are.
So, and I mean, that's what it is. It's an old folks' home and a tourist attraction. And we got to get a fine line somewhere in the middle to keep from destroying it. You know, if not, then nobody's going to come here. If everybody moves here, yeah, you're going to have tax dollars coming in from the homes, and it's kind of like that affordable housing. There is no affordable housing around here for nobody, because if I can sell a house for 300,000, why am I going to sell it for 250? To somebody around here that could afford the 250, which I've done that twice in the last few years to help some young couples. But it's a fine line on everything there, so maybe y'all can come up with the answer.
We will come at you.
Thank you.
Well, thank you.
No, thank you very much.
If I had an answer, I would try to solve the problem.
Thank you, I wish I could.
So any other comments from the council? Someone like to make a motion? One of the three options?
I move that the special use permit 24-006, we are on six, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Be recommended to council for approval, with the conditions as presented.
We've got a motion, is there a second?
Second.
You have a second? Any further discussion by the council? Have a roll call, please.
Mr. Seaver.
Yes.
Ms. Stonebuck.
No.
Mr. Sowers.
Yes.
Mr. Huffman.
Yes.
Ms. Dixon.
Yes.
So I believe that gets us over into discussions about the comprehensive plan.
No, we have one more.
Oh, we do?
198 Baker.
I'm sorry, we have too many pages in here.
The pages are.
Oh, yes. Yes, this is a special use permit for 198 Baker Drive. Artols and Eileen Lees. So they, again, have provided the necessary documents required for the request of a special Out in the same area.
And these are the ones that, it's their second home, and they want it rented when they're not there.
Have a location map and, uh, any further comments about this one? any further comments about this one?
I would move that, do you want to
Yes.
open and close the hearing here?
Yes, we need to open the public hearing and we'll close the public hearing.
I would move that the, we recommend the special use permit twenty-four zero zero seven to be recommended to the council for approval as the conditions as presented.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
We had, so Brian had a second? Any further discussion? If not, we'll take a roll call.
Mr. Seaver.
Yes.
Mr. Stonewall.
No.
Mr. Sowers.
Yes.
Mr. Houghton.
Yes.
Mr. Dixon.
Yes.
Mr. Shae.
So now we can move over into the other part of our agenda. Brian, do you have any comments about
Yeah, I think
the remaining section here?
Yeah, we're definitely, we're definitely going to see, you know, some input in this. I've got a potential interest from a grad student UVA to do an internship and they're currently in graduating with masters in urban planning and it's a local person, so I'm going to see if they're interested in coming in and assisting with not only the comprehensive plan update, but also helping to set up probably our online surveys and maybe facilitate some of our public meetings and kind of focus our topics on some of the bigger like housing, you know, which is kind of our bigger topics. Every time we do a comp plan, housing is always a big topic and, you know, for a hundred and fifty years, the town has talked about more, we're better housing and so far I'm not sure we've ever solved the issue. I'm not sure we ever will, but because as our populations evolve, the housing needs evolve and they're way behind. Housing needs are usually, or housing types are typically, uses are typically far behind the curve when it comes to need, so housing will always be a huge project for us, for on our comp plan. But I'm going to reach out and see if that person's interested in doing, cut some of those duties. I am going to be advertising for a planning and zoning technician, which is a full-time position with the town. That'll be effective July one if I get interested candidates for that, so those ads can be out soon, so one of that person's jobs is going to be really helping with that, helping do a lot of zoning permits and then taking over Joey so he can go home on Joey's birthday, on his birthday like today, so happy to be here.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
So, but yes, I think, you know, housing is always going to be a big deal and one of the things that we do when we reach out to our community for housing types is we get ahold of builders, we directly approach real estate agents, you know, home appraisers, bank financiers, you know, the people who are actively engaged in the real estate markets and try to get them engaged in what they see, what they think they'd like to see, and of course, you know, for most of those people, it's always more money. So that's a difficult cliff to kind of climb when that's a driving force for a lot of those individuals and because that's their livelihoods, you know, so, you know, Jim's not here to do to build houses for charity work, he builds houses for, you know, so he's done some charity work in his day, I'm sure, but it's not a typical thing for him, so he's not habitat free man, you know, he's a local builder. The great news about Jim's partner, they build modern sized homes with decent square footage that are aimed at younger starter couples or downsized individuals, so that's something our community definitely can use and that's going to be one of the big things on housing. But as far as you guys, for this particular topic, I was just going to request that you continue to assemble the things on housing that are important for you, the thing that are in our ordinance or not in our ordinance right now, the things that are in our ordinance that don't make sense to you or that don't need to belong in our ordinance or ordinances regulating either zoning or subdivision. And then if there are new possibilities out there, such as, you know, more on the apartment buildings, the apartment houses, you know, currently in B one right now, as a business, because it's a residential use, an apartment house requires extra steps, should it require extra steps, or should it be something that somebody could open, you know, as a, operate as a residential apartment house in a B one district fairly easily, you know, with just the business license and building official inspection? Some of those are things that we'll need to talk about and think about as you guys accumulate your little list of ideas and then hopefully one of the things that we'll be able to do is help collect those from you and then compile them into a fairly comprehensive list and then we'll just rule them down as a group and which ones we want to include, which ones are not necessary, which ones maybe are, we study them a little bit longer. So that was all I had on that one. The, you know, some of the previous topics we've talked about are listed there. You know, one of the things today that, from a business perspective, not necessarily from a residential or housing perspective, is the fact that we require special use permits for all of our M one applications, even if they're inside an existing structure that was built for that very purpose, any use inside that thing, even if there's five uses in there now, each one of them has to have a special use permit.
Why is that?
Just the way the ordinance is written. So those are things that we should maybe take a look at from a business perspective. Are there ways to streamline our ordinance so that we don't give away the farm on things like, you know, M one limited industrial, but if there's uses that that building was built for and were already used for in the past, and you're talking about people coming in and doing the exact same thing, do you require them to go through and get a special use permit process? Again, every operator's different, every business is different, so maybe there is, but maybe it's, maybe it's not. So those are things that we'd like for you folks to continue to talk about and compile and, you know, comments tonight and things like that.
Well, we did talk about this, that, I don't think you were here the last time and went over, over this and, you know, I'm in favor of a lot of these. I think we need some assistance from the administration, like, you know, considering lot sizes for a new development. I really don't know what to suggest. We'd like to know maybe what some of these other communities around us are doing of similar size, or maybe if the, you and the staff have any recommendations for us to consider, and the same thing with, you know, setbacks and things like that.
Yeah, smaller lot sizes will conform to that, you know, and that's what they were thinking at the Chando Land Improvement Company in the eighteen eighties when they laid out all the lots in Bookeville in the R four. But what happened was, was that nobody wanted to build a house that small, so then everybody bought two or three of those lots and built one house on three of them that was much bigger and still met setbacks. So it didn't kind of do what they designed for it to do.
Well, Victorian families had a lot more children than families do now.
True.
That's a good point.
And they needed bigger houses, that's why all those houses, those houses built in that time period are so big.
Well, and, and, you know, the, the industrial component on that side of the range never materialized, because that was supposed to be homes of orders and it really didn't happen. So those lots are smaller, they have smaller, you know, smaller setbacks, there's a higher density there and that brings in a whole host of other issues, you know, when you increase those densities, you're jamming people in there elbow to elbow. You do get more conflicts over property lines and disputes over noise and property use and cars and, you know, just all kinds of stuff. But yeah, so when you have a smaller lot, you definitely have typically setbacks that are in relation to that, which drives your, your dwelling size to some extent, provided that everybody builds on one lot. Because they come in with a model that they already know what this thing costs to build, they've got the plans for it, they've got the materials list for it, to make that house work, I've got to have two of these lots out here on six. So if they buy two lots and they build that house, if they know how to build and they know what it costs and they know everything to the penny, because that's the house that they're familiar with, that's the house that they know can sell and that's what they're going to sell. So it sometimes lot size drives, it typically works better in the low density districts where you have fifteen thousand per foot, ten, you know, R one, ten thousand square foot minimums out there. But yeah, those are things that, put them down on your list and if you have a question about that, put a question, put the question right beside of it, because that's a question that we can answer. If we can't, then maybe we need to figure out, but yeah, that's, that's what I was going to get, the request you guys continue to do for, for not only just all of the comp plan priorities through the entire plan, but, you know, specifically housing goals and land use, which is always a kind of a big deal, because now that you have the land mapped, to change that, the owner has to want to do it. Like for us to come in as a town and say, yeah, we don't think this whole street should be R two anymore, we think it should be R three, well, get your checkbook out, because you're going to spend a lot of time in court, because you're never going to be able to make that happen. So while there's things that we would like to do or maybe should do as a community, we can't make those people do that. They have to want to do it. There has to be an econ driver for them to do it, there has to be a moral or philosophical reason for them to do it, they have to want to do those things. So how do we encourage them to want to do those things? That's what we have to focus on in comp plan is how can we engage them? You know, the stick doesn't work, we have to have care, so those are topics that we'll talk about in the moving forward. That's all I had on A and then the reason Jim's here is right at B on the agenda. So do you guys have any questions about A that I'll, what we talked about? So in your package should be a thing that looks like this.
I had a really hard time telling which were the yellow lines and which were the orange lines.
When I put those things through the
It was really tough.
I was like, like, because it came out looking just like it does on the screen there and they're both kind of orange.
Well, actually, that's a little bit
That's better than this.
Yeah.
This is yellow and yellow.
Yeah.
Gold and yellow.
So along Reservoir Road, there's twelve lots there that are currently subdivided and platted and Jim and this part of our building houses on. The dashed yellow line or orange line, whatever you see there, is where the current town, county boundary is. The solid yellow slash orange line that you see there is where the applicants, when they haven't applied yet, it's just a balloon, sending up a balloon to, to see how it, how it flies on, at both, so the town council is going to see this in July too, so they're going to get as an information item to see whether or not the town would be willing to consider doing a friendly BLA with the county to where the solid line is, which would essentially extend four new streets and two new cul-de-sac ends and a total, including the twelve that are already there, a total of seventy-three lots that would be brought into the corporate boundary of Lorraine. So, and the reason for that is if this stays in the county, they don't get to have lots this size, they have to be much bigger. And then from what I understand, the formula for the development math doesn't work out. It doesn't, not work off for them to try to do that on that scale, because you can't build the roads and the water and the sewer and the stormwater unless you can get a certain density on the property. So this is, like I said, this is just information only, I wanted to get your thoughts on it, you know, off the cuff, if you guys want to wait and think about it a little bit more and just email me and let me know, this is going to go to the town council too, as an information item next month to get, to get them to take a look at it. I may try to slide it in on May twenty-eighth, special meeting, unless the mayor decides that that's, that agenda is too far, so.
So they, they would be on the, the town water and sewer and the town water and sewer can, can accommodate?
Well, that's where we get into a little bit of an issue. So Fairview Road and Reservoir Avenue have a single eight inch sewer main that runs down there from the store towards the town. If you remember, and there's a partner, there's a neighboring lot right next door, if you look above the north area there, that says Century Lorraine. Anybody remember Century Lorraine being a topic of conversation for the planning commission of the town council, load this many years ago? I don't think any of you were on the commission at that time.
I don't think so.
So it was going to be an age restricted community of which twelve of the lots were going to be in town, a hundred and eighty-some lots to a total of, to potentially two hundred and thirty lots were going to be in the county and they would be brought into the town and they would provide water, the town would provide water and sewer. So one of the big sticking points was water line access, not a big deal, probably provide the water, maybe require a booster pump station. The sewer line that runs down Reservoir Avenue is an eight inch line and it's fairly flat and it's pretty old. So because it's flat, part of its capacity is full all the time, like not full, but it has effluent standing in it twenty-four seven, three sixty-five because it is flat. So when we did the Arthur Lane friendly boundary line adjustment and brought those fourteen lots into corporate boundary, for Chris Ramsey, there were comments and concerns then from those residents about sewer capacity for that main, because they still remembered the Century Lorraine problems. They eventually withdrew that, that application.
Was that last, last year, year before with the fourteen, something came up?
The fourteen was last year.
That last year.
Late twenty twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-three, we did a friendly boundary line and brought fourteen lots in from the county. And so the neighbors were bringing up questions then about, is the sewer line going to handle it? Because it wasn't going to handle those other houses, you know, what about traffic now? We're going to have more cars out here. Turns out this was a private road, probably not a great thing, but that's the way it was developed, so there were a lot of concerns from the neighbors about that. This is further down the road, closer to town, the road that angles off there, you can see a little piece of it headed kind of to the east, that's Eden. And right across from this right now is big cornfields, you know, big farm fields. So the real issue for us moving forward is do we have the hydraulic capacity in that eight inch sewer line to handle a total of seventy-three more homes right here? You know, if they pump it right into the line right there, will it take it? Or is it going to cause problems for them and, and/or the neighbors? You know, which is things that nobody likes to hear about, backups, all kinds of issues. So.
Well, all of those problems are problems for the town.
Yep. So they're, they're, and more importantly, they're problems for the individual homeowners who already live there and then the new development, you know, kind of impacts that. So those are all issues that are going to come up, you know, as this thing, if it advances, that's, that's what's going to, that's what's going to happen. Those, those concerns will be talked about. Transportation will be one, there's already, when they did the initial subdivision, they planned for new streets and provided commercial entrances, well, more larger residential entrances out on Reservoir and Fairview. So transportation, stormwater is a big one, you know, the county typically handles that. The ultimate outfall for the stormwater is still going to be in the county, so the county's going to have a very active role there, there will be a sewer pump station that will pump. You know, at one time, Century Lorraine was looking at pumping all the way out Eden Road and down to Creekside.
Wow.
With the sewer, until they figured out how much it was going to cost. And then at that point, yeah, but it depends on how bad you want to build it, you know, but for them, you know, most of their property is out in the county, so for that, you know, and, and it's similar here with, with Jim and Tom, you know, they have a little bit more land that's in the town, probably a one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, like six more lots that are in town right now, that they could potentially build seven if you count the one near the church, but beyond that, they have to, if they're going to expand this at all, they're going to have to do a friendly BLA, because, you know, just from a dollars and cents standpoint, you don't want to pay out of town rates if you pay in town rates, so, because they're fifty percent more. rates. So, because they're 50% more. So there's a couple of reasons why they obviously want to do this. And so like I said, this is going to go to town council. You guys email me what your thoughts are. It's fine. I know it's kind of short notice here. Tom wrote it into me last week and I thought I'm getting on the agenda as an informational item. So just be considering what you're thinking there. This would build all these, are these new lots, Jim, are they going to be the same sizes as the front 12 or are they going to be a little bit smaller?
They'd be, I think they'll be the same size. I don't, it's required, requirement of that's 15,000 square foot.
15,000 square foot if it comes in as R1. And, and right now, I think that's what you've got in the front 12 is R1, 15,000. So the, the parts in town now is already R1 zoning. So we would bring this in at the highest and best residential use, which is low density residential. Unless they want to try to do a rezoning and, and downzone to R2 to get 10,000 per foot lots. But there's nothing R2 around there. So that would, I don't know. That'd be a question for you in the county, you guys in council. But take a look at this and figure out what your thoughts are about it, if you have any thoughts or concerns. What I can tell you about this compared to anything else is if it does come in at R1, these are going to be single family dwellings. At most, they would be duplex, two family villas. But these guys typically don't build villas. They build single family homes. And they build an ice home. I've met in a couple of them.
What would an average cost be for, what would an average purchase price be for one of those? Any?
About 200. Must just average it out at 275. Just do that a little bit more than that. They're worth selling for more than that. We were trying to do brick front homes with garages, make them a little bit nicer homes, but they weren't selling, they weren't selling there as good. You've got to go with what's selling to keep it going.
Yeah. And you have to build something that people are going to want to buy and you got to build and sell it at a price they're willing to pay. And right now, even if you had the inventory, interest rates are so high that, well, high compared to three years ago, not high period. But because they are, there are people who will not either be able to afford or want to afford a, a long-term mortgage right now, even though the houses, they may have a house they like, they may not be willing to sign that paper, you know. So we're in a little bit of a storm area here, but you know, Jim and them's idea to build similar square footage, I think, but without the garage or attached carport and no great front, right?
Around 1,400 square foot.
Yeah. And that, that's about the magic number for us. You know, somewhere between the 1,200 to 1,700 square foot, single family home is a really attractive size. But they, they have allowed for the addition of the garage or the carport at a later date. So when you built the houses, they offset them so that if the owner wanted to come back in and add a carport or garage later, they'd have the site setback to be able to do that, which is a good idea because that gives them the ability to do that later if they want it.
Most of what we're selling is to people out of town. It's a couple of families we're working with now trying to get them to where young couples in this county where we can get them a home up there. We just got to see how the loans go for them. So, you know, it's hard to do. I'd like to be able to help people in the county. I really would. It'd be great.
It's, you know, it's a lot of the early retirees from the DMV that are, and they're working remotely, a lot of them. So it's going to continue. It's either good or bad. I kind of think it's good.
What you got to do. It's hard to help people around here because people around here don't have the income to do it unless they go to their father's home or they're somewhere away from here. I mean, there's nothing else here for young people to do but go out of town for jobs. I mean, if they do, then they can afford a home here and travel, commute.
And I don't know what the answer is to the, to the local people. I...
What do you do? I mean, it's, how do you help? You know, how do you help? What do you do?
Yeah, we see that, too. You know, we get a lot of retirees from the National Park, you know, relocated here. The husband and wife team, one of both of them worked for National Park Service, then they want to retire here. And they retire from Lorraine, well, they, they look to buy a local house. And they're not from this area, but they typically sold a whole, a home somewhere else for a whole lot more money. And so they're able to pay cash for that thing or pay a premium price for that house. And I don't know a builder or a real estate agent yet that's going to say no to that higher dollar value if they could say yes. So market forces could work both ways. They work against builders sometimes and sometimes they work for them. So we, we do our best by trying to stand a little. But anyway, that's coming. Just wanted to get a look at it now. You can send me your thoughts or whatever later. Thanks to our town council.
What are hook up fees now?
For a standard five eighths meter, water is $3,320 in town and sewer is $5,940 in town. So with your connection fees of about $1,500 fees...
Twenty-six hundred dollars.
For the water and sewer, and then you paid the connection. Of course, you guys didn't pay that because you did the work yourself, but, or we had it already done. But it's about $11,000 with, for the total markup. I tell people to factor in about 12 grand for the water and sewer in town in, in their budgets. And if you're out of town, it's 50% more than that minimum. So.
Like I say, everything's so expensive, it's even hard to develop. If we could, could develop those lots, it's going to be tight.
Yep.
I mean, you're going to have a fortune in the lots. You won't want you to even realize. You're not going to make no money off the lots, really. You're making money off the housing, building houses, but you're not going to make no money off the land.
Yeah. And I'll tell you, you're probably going to have to get to the last, what at, about 15%, maybe get to the last 15% and then you're starting to look at free and clear money. Yeah. Everything up to that point is just paying off everything else, you know, the infrastructure and everything else. So it's not like there's a massive, you know, a margin there because it's not. You've got to go through a lot of money first to get to the end where you can actually make.
So Brian, what, what is involved and, and who is involved in determining whether that eight inch line will handle 73 more houses?
What they did last time was they required, yeah, they required, they required applicants to have an engineer do a hydraulic study and look at the impact of flows. And they not only have to look at this build out, but also the build out to the east of them. Like if everything out there that's currently, the land that's out there on the east side that's currently undeveloped, if a, if a house was built on every one of those lots and it's all going to come down this line, what does that look like plus the potential to develop? And I can tell you that they were a little bit all over the map. Of course, they were proposing a huge, like, factor of four more homes than this is, but yeah, they, they required them to hire an engineer to...
So that's like a RACI or is that a different kind of engineer?
No, it's going to be a hydrodynamic engineer. They're going to be a plumbing, they might get Frankie Stewart to do it. He might, he might get his engineer to see if he'll be able to do that. But no, it'll, it'll require a HVAC, you know, type engineer to look at that and determine that build out, those flows, you know, because you always look at peak flows, always look at maximum flow of flows because that's your worst case scenario. If you can build it to handle that, it'll handle everything.
Well, is there anything else? I think we've completed what we were tasked with today. Thank you, Brian, for helping us with the comprehensive plan ideas that we need to keep in mind.
When, when will we actually start with, like, moving forward with public meetings and such? When does that start?
Normally, so we're not required to update until 2025. So then we have a little way to have, but we want to get started now because it is a long process. Typically, what we do is we don't do the public stuff until we get kind of our game plan internally together. And that primarily means y'all's game plan. We're going to just assemble it. So we get, we get our outline together and y'all's, you know, priorities and things that you've noted over the years being on the commission, put those together and then, then we start advocating for the public input and then we start at public meetings. Because it's kind of tough to, it's kind of tough to go out to the community if we don't have our ducks in the roof. So we, we try to have a, a framework and we put our pieces into the framework and then we go out and see what the general public, see what the builders, see what the real estate agency, what all those other groups have to say to add to that, to kind of flesh out that framework. So we, we try to provide the guide points and then let them provide ideas. And every once in a while, I mean, I could think of two, two complaints ago where we got some ideas that we didn't, we didn't have, we didn't have them, we didn't have them in the plan. And so they got ahead. They were good enough to get added by the group, the planning commission elected, so thought that they were important enough to add them in.
Yeah. Because it kind of would seem to me that you would want to get input from stakeholders and from community people about what goals they have and what they see in the plan that they either would like changed or added or what they want Lorraine to be. And then we take that input and we develop goals. So you described a process that's sort of flip flop from what I'm used to doing.
We have to give them the template. If we don't give them the template, it's chasing cats all the way around. So we never get to the end until, so what we've learned is we give them the framework. If they have things that glom onto that framework, all great. If they come up with something totally new, we add it in or take something else out. But we try to give them something to work towards rather than just have a blank sheet of paper. Because blank sheets of paper end up in thousands of...
Well, right. But I, I mean, what I thought is like you would give them the current plan and our existing conditions, where we are demographically, where we are land use wise, and let them...
Chew on that.
Chew on that and make recommendations. And, and then we take that and develop.
So we have, we will link that to that plan, which is online. We'll give them that link. We'll give them the topic areas that the planning commission is currently, you know, kind of rotating on right now. And then we'll give them a framework and then we'll do, we typically do an online survey first just to kind of break the ice. And then we have at least two public meetings where they can come and walk around and write ideas down on sketchboards to where we can collect those later and kind of queue up. A lot of times they're hitting on the same points that you guys are already written down on your sheets, you know, or...
But there may be an easel up there with something like a roundabout that we were looking to develop 10 years ago.
Correct.
And then they're like, oh, I think that's a, you need to do this, you need to do that, needs to be here. That's a terrible idea. That's a great idea. It's going to be accidents, it's going to help flow, whatever. And they just, and kind of go off of like subjects, you know.
Yeah. We give the subject matter on a framework, kind of like a skeleton outline. And then sometimes they'll come up with something great. Sometimes the community comes up with stuff we hadn't even thought about. But most of the time, the framework over the last at least five comp plans that I've looked through, the framework rarely changes. It's almost the same topics. So for over 100 years, we've been dealing with the exact same subject matters. We just, we're making incremental progress toward a lot of, we've accomplished a lot of things, but I think apparently there's no silver bullet out there. There's no crystal ball that lets us see everything and solve everything. So yeah, normally we don't, we try to give somebody something to start with. We give them starter pieces and then that, a lot of times that triggers thoughts for, from them that we get better feedback along the way. So that's kind of what we've found to be successful in the past. And it allows people to engage. They're more comfortable engaging that way when we have a little focus. But yeah, that'll be the process. And we, I, I need to give you guys a chance to get all your stuff kind of lined up and, and things first because I want to make sure that that's going to formulate our initial rough broad strokes, you know, we need to start the process. And it's on the fiddling that the planning commission should set up those broad strokes.
Okay. I suppose we will adjourn the meeting. I think we've done all we can do this evening. And you have the date of the next meeting, Brian? I don't think I do, but I assume it's...
It is June the 12th. And one of the things that we, the mayor and I had talked about is based on their agenda, and that's why I didn't...
Oh, that's one of those...
I didn't pursue 9A and B. We, we don't really have anything for 9B that I know of right now that's ready. A lot of that will come out of the comp plan work. But I told him there was some, still some discussion about 9A. He said, well, don't worry about bringing it back now. Wait till June. Give them another month to think about it. So for 9A on your, on your agenda for action items, chew on that and I guess be prepared to vote on June 12th because they, they would like to have something for their July, 9B. So if the answer is something, nothing, everything, that's fine. Each of you can write down your own little thing and put it on a slip of paper and fold it up and turn them in and we'll...
So I, I had a question last time when you weren't here and they all said that you would know.
Yeah.
I probably won't. Probably don't know.
Yeah.
So the, the question is, a lodging house is, are 30 days or less, not, not to be rented more than 30 days, but our short-term rental says 14 days. And so my question was, why was that, why was that difference made in the, in the ordinance or in the chapter 519 or whatever? Why, why, what, do you remember what the discussion was and why they wrote it that way when they did it?
The only thing that I can remember about that was the fact that even though they're allowed up to 30 days, they still meet the state definition of a short-term rental. Most lodging house rentals and most transient occupancy rentals are based on 14 days or less. So whether you're a hotel, motel, bed and breakfast, or a lodging house, 14 days is typically the max for a transient level period. So while you can rent rooms longer than that, 14 days is kind of the national number. And so that's why it became a special condition on our lodging house list there is that to stay, you're only allowed up to 30 days to stay on the special use permit would be limited to 14 days or less. That's why.
Okay.
Anything else? We'll stand adjourned to July 12.
June 12.
June 12.
Yes, sir.
You want us to move on?